Good evening. Really excited that you all are joining us tonight and attending the April 21st, 2025 meeting at the Westerville City School Boards of Education. This evening's agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. There's printed agendas in the back of the room for our guest, or you may find it on your mobile device by connecting to the district's website at www.wcsoh.org. Click on "Our District" link, select "Board of Education," and then follow the Board Docs link to our current meeting agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment this evening. There's a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board, and a timer will be shown on the screen. This portion of the meeting shall be limited to no more than 60 minutes. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Ottman?
Here.
Mr. Heckelman?
Here.
Mrs. Valentine?
Here.
Mrs. Liban?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Here.
Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So this is the fun part of the night. We get to do district highlights and recognitions. And first up, we have 3.01, Ohio Auditor of State Award with Distinction. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Marshall.
Thank you, President Meyer, members of the board. So we have, from the Auditor of State's office here tonight, Mr. Scott Brown. He is the Central Ohio Regional Liaison. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Central Region. Yes, thank you. And he is here to present our district. You know, I think as the treasurer and being in charge of all of the finances, a lot of people think this is a finance award, but really it is a district-wide award. It impacts everyone from, you know, my office and all through the buildings and all through our departments and everywhere else. And then I have some of my staff here tonight. I'd like to invite them up. Laura Hendricks, Meg Patton, Gloria Stelzer, Adam Aben-Tamas, and Kylie Bishop. If you would please come up here as Mr. Brown shares about this award with us. I'll turn it over to you.
Sorry, I'm just cutting out the parts that the treasurer already said about my speech tonight. I do appreciate a few moments on your agenda this evening to celebrate a job well done. My name is Scott Brown, and I do serve as Auditor of State Keith Faber's Central Ohio Liaison, or as the auditor would say, your personal customer service representative. It's my honor to be here this evening on behalf of Auditor Faber to present the Auditor of State of Award with Distinction to the Westerville City School District. Each year, our office is responsible for conducting more than 4,200 audits of our 6,000 clients statewide. This award places your organization in a select group as just 4% qualify for this award. The Auditor of State of Award is presented to local governments, school districts, and other agencies upon the completion of a financial audit that meet the following criteria: defined as a clean audit report, or as I like to say, a short audit letter. The entity must file financial reports with the auditor's office by statutory due date without extension on a GAAP accounting basis and prepare a comprehensive annual financial report. The audit report does not contain any findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, uniform guidance findings, or other question costs, along with a number of other audit-type-related issues, which I will not read because the list is long. Let's move to the fun part. This award represents the hard work of all of Westerville's staff and employees who make every effort each day to attain accounting excellence. We'd like to recognize the board, the administration, and the finance department that have done an outstanding job watching over every dollar. What this truly means is that across your entire organization, you have the people and the processes in place that understand fiscal accountability. Specifically, we want to recognize your treasurer and CFO, Nicole Marshall, for her leadership, professionalism, and exceptional commitment to fiscal integrity. So on behalf of State Auditor Faber, I would like to present the Westerville City School District the Auditor of State of Award with Distinctions. Congratulations.
So continuing our celebrations, we are going to move along to 3.2 through 3.5. So we're going to recognize the Westerville North Boys Basketball Team, the Indoor State Track Champions, and the State Wrestling Championship Tournament, and then also our Spring A+ Awards. So I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues, Ms. Liban and Ms. Valentine.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. It's always so fun when we get to have these types of recognitions, so we thank you all for being here. So I'd like to invite Coach Trustley and the following students to join us up at the front. Tyson Perkins, Micah Young, Ty Perkins, Elijah McCree, Ronald Jackson Jr., Damian King, Jacob Medhany, Tony Cornet, Noah Hale, Nolan Fedak, Nate Roman, and Desmond Okanty. So we are recognizing Westerville North's Boys Basketball Team this evening for winning the Ohio High School Athletic Association's Division II State Boys Basketball Championship. So they defeated Maslin Perry High School 78-46 to earn North's second state basketball championship since 1994. This was a huge win. I'm a huge basketball fan. I was very excited to do this award. I actually went to Dayton with my family to see the championship, so well-deserved. What a awesome win. But you didn't just win. You made a statement that has resonated throughout your incredible season this year. Let's listen to some statistics from the year. Their overall record was 25-2, which coincidentally ties the school record set in 1994 when North last won the championship. They were undefeated against OCC opponents, 12-0. They won 24 games in a row. Not counting the championship game, the average margin of victory was 28.3 points. That is huge. They averaged 76.7 points per game and forced 20.2 turnovers per game. They clocked in 17.5 assists per game. In addition, two players, Micah Young and Ty Perkins... Want to wave to everybody?
They're in Italy.
Oh, they're in Italy! How dare they? Well, we'll congratulate them even though they're not here. Ended their North basketball career scoring more than 1,000 points. Micah tallied 1,297 points while Ty scored 1,140 points. Truly incredible. The team and coaches were recently recognized by the City of Westerville Board of Trustees and the Ohio House. They are scheduled to be recognized by the Franklin County Board of Commissioners and the Ohio Senate. So tonight, it was just our turn. So to students, coaches, truly enjoy this. You have earned it. You put in such hard work. We are proud of you, inspired by you, and can't wait to see some more basketball next year. So I want to also acknowledge Westerville North Principal Kurt Yancy and his family members, who I believe are in attendance. There we are. Mr. Yancy. So congratulations all again. Thank you so much. All righty. Next, we will recognize students at Westerville Central High School who earned top spots, including two who are state champions during the 2025 Indoor State Track Championship on March 8th at the Spire Institute in Geneva. First, I'd like to welcome or invite Elijah Harris to join me up front. Elijah is a back-to-back state champion in the high jump and triple jump. Like last year, he placed first in both events, so that's wonderful.
Robert Young, can you join us? Robert is the state champion in the 400-meter dash. Last year, he placed seventh. He is also the state runner-up in the 200-meter dash, a repeat from last year where he also placed second. Through Elijah and Robert's achievements, the Central's boy team were the state runner-ups at the Indoor State Track Meet. I'd like to invite up Olivia Metlow. Olivia placed third in the 200-meter dash and fourth in the 60-meter dash. Congratulations. Up next, we have Skylar Britman. Can you join us? Skylar placed sixth in the 60-meter hurdles, clocking in a new school record with a time of 8.94 seconds. And finally, can Simone Smith join us? Simone placed fifth in the weight throw, setting a new school record with a mark of 44 feet and .5 inches. She also placed 16th in the shot put. Again, congratulations to these members of Central's track and field team. Behind every podium finish is early morning training, after-school workouts, and a mindset that refuses to give up. You put in the work, and it paid off. I want to acknowledge David Metlow and Jason Lumen, the track coaches at Westerville Central, as well as Dawn Sayer, Central High School Principal, who is in the audience this evening. Congratulations. Yes, let's take a photo. Let's join her photo.
You guys doing the photo? The photo? Yep, let's get it.
We can do it back out there. Yeah. Who's that?
Next, we are going to recognize our state wrestling champions, the Ohio High School Athletic Association State Wrestling Championship Tournament. We want to recognize two students who earned top spots at the Ohio State School Athletics Association's State Wrestling Tournament in March. I'd like to call on Arden Heckman from Westerville North. Congratulations. Arden placed fifth in her weight class during the state tournament. And now, I would like to welcome up Christian St. Clair from Westerville South to join Christian placed eighth in his weight class at the state tournament. That's so wonderful. Arden and Christian, congratulations to you both. You worked so, so hard, and it paid off. Wrestling takes strength, strategy, and serious heart. To come out on top in such a demanding sport is a true testament to your grit and commitment. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge North Principal Kurt Yancy, North's Girl Wrestling Coach Kenny Farrow, South's Principal Mike Henze, and family members who are in the audience this evening. Thank you.
All right. So we're going to move on to our A+ Awards athletes. I know you all are probably coming up on big projects and stuff due at the end of the semester, the quarter. If you would like to leave, you are all excused to leave now. Thank you, and congratulations again. We'll give everybody just a minute to exit out. And of course, everybody is welcome to stay for the A+ Awards and the rest of our super exciting meeting. Okay. Oh, okay. Okay, yeah. Wait a minute. Oh my God, I love his neon pink shoes. That's amazing. Mark Twain, Heather Ivory. We're just waiting on a handful of folks to come in from the atrium. Just want to roll around on the floor. All right. Come on in, staff. All right. Let's go ahead and move on to our A+ Awards. Thank you all for sitting tight for a minute. So the A+ Awards are presented twice each school year, once in the fall and once in the spring, to employees who distinguish themselves through a single or ongoing demonstration of exemplary performance. The selection committee's decision is guided by evaluating how each nominee's actions support the district's mission, their willingness to go above and beyond normal expectations, and how their behavior is consistent with one or more of the district's values. We are honored tonight to recognize the 2025 Spring A+ Award winners. So let's go ahead and get started. So first up, please welcome Mark Twain Elementary Teacher Heather Ivory. All right. Heather was nominated by 16 parents and grandparents. So she truly won the hearts of her students, their families, and her peers. Nominated by an incredible 16 individuals, one theme was consistent across every nomination: kindness. One parent shared that this is the fourth child in their family to have had the privilege of being in Mrs. Ivory's kindergarten class. As any parent knows, sending a child off to kindergarten can be both exciting and overwhelming, but from the very first moment her children met Mrs. Ivory, they felt safe, supported, and deeply cared for. Another parent noted that Mrs. Ivory has given her son a confidence that she believes will serve as the foundation for his entire educational journey. Many echoed similar sentiments describing her classroom as "a nurturing, positive environment where each child is celebrated." One parent even called her "the queen of kindness." It's a great title. And one quote simply says it all: "She's the best kindergarten teacher in the USA." So congratulations to Mark Twain, Heather Ivory. Wonderful. Chances are, if you've had a conversation with anyone across the district, you've heard the name Wanda Myers, and more than likely, you've been positively impacted by her work. From her current role in human resources to her previous service in food services, in her time as union president, Wanda has consistently demonstrated dedication, passion, and an unwavering commitment to the Westerville City Schools District. Throughout her career, she has gracefully navigated changes in leadership, evolving responsibilities, and shifting priorities, all while remaining a steadfast presence and a trusted colleague. She is frequently described as a team player, a mentor, and a role model. After 28 years of service, Wanda will retire this summer. A quote we received: "Her dedication to her family and grandchildren is admirable." And it has been fun getting to watch her set herself up for what will truly be a rewarding next chapter of her life in retirement. Congratulations, Wanda, and thank you so, so much for your incredible contribution to All right. Next, please welcome McVeigh's driver, Katie Stanley. Sorry, apologies that it's not McVeigh Elementary. It is myvan driver. She's not driving the whole school at McVeigh. So Katie was nominated by a parent. She has been described as an "A-plus myvan driver," a title that couldn't be more fitting. Each day, she goes above and beyond her responsibilities, making a meaningful and lasting impact on the students that she transports. This family met Ms. Katie Stanley, affectionately known as Ms. Katie, three years ago when their son transitioned from the school bus to the myvan due to a disability. What could have been a challenging and emotional change was made smooth and comforting thanks to Ms. Katie's warmth, patience, and reassuring smile. Since then, she has become so much more than a driver. She's become family. From exchanging holiday gifts and singing favorite songs to weekly summer updates via text, her relationship with her writers extends far beyond the school year. A quote: "Ms. Katie is more than deserving of the Westerville A+ Award. She's the essence of excellence, compassion, and service, and we cannot imagine the past three years without her." So congratulations to Katie Stanley on this recognition.
Thank you so much. Next, we are excited to recognize Jerry McSwords. Our next recipient is Westerville Central. Truly, Mr. Jerry McSwords's unwavering dedication to students, staff, and the entire school community is truly unmatched. Every single day, he goes above and beyond to ensure Westerville Central is the best it can be, fully embodying what it means to be a warhawk. His ability to connect with students, both academically and personally, inspires them to succeed in ways they never could have imagined. Mr. McSwords' contributions are shown all over the school, whether serving as a senior class advisor, freshman football coach, head varsity wrestling coach, or homecoming assembly director. His involvement touches nearly every corner of student life. A quote: "Jerry is always willing to assist with any new idea or initiative, demonstrating a relentless pursuit of growth and collaboration. His contributions make a lasting impact on everyone fortunate enough to work with him." So thank you so much, and help me congratulate Westerville Central teacher Jerry McSwords.
Next, let's please welcome Hanby Elementary Teacher Alexandra Hamilton. So Alexandra was nominated by a parent, and she is the next recipient. Alexandra has a true passion for music, teaching it, playing it, and most importantly, inspiring her students to love it. Through her music as education, Ms. Hamilton models values such as respect, inclusiveness, collaboration, communication, and community. Shortly after joining Hanby Elementary, Ms. Hamilton took the initiative to form a choir for 4th and 5th grade students. Meeting once a week after school, the choir has become a space where students not only express their love for singing, but also learn the importance of working together and supporting each other. Quote from the nomination: "Ms. Hamilton is very good at encouraging and inspiring her students. My daughter is very motivated to practice at home and becomes even more confident of herself when she is on stage. So thank you, Ms. Hamilton, for instilling a love of arts and empowering your students through music. Congratulations." Help me Alright, help me welcome Gina Meyer. Congratulations, Gina. For the past eighteen years, our next recipient has made an extraordinary impact on our elementary students whose first language is not English, playing a critical role in both their academic success and their connection to the school community. Ms. Gina Meyer, who is bilingual in Spanish and English, currently supports more than one hundred English as a second-language students at Fowles Elementary. Each day, she provides direct support to students whose needs, who need language assistance to fully engage with their education. But her impact goes far beyond academics. She helps foster a sense of belonging, confidence, and a connection among students who might otherwise struggle to access the curriculum. A quote we received, "Beyond her daily responsibilities, she serves as a vital bridge between teachers, students, and Spanish-speaking families, ensuring clear and meaningful communication. She tirelessly translates parent-teacher conferences, helping families stay informed and engaged in their children's education. Ms. Meyer is a passionate advocate for her students, empowering everyone around her to succeed." Congratulations again, Gina. Alright, next, please welcome Minerva France Elementary Teacher Jennifer Luthan. So, Jennifer was nominated by a coworker. She's a key contributor to the Minerva France team, consistently leading with dedication, flexibility, and heart. Jennifer serves in a number of leadership roles, including as a member of the building leadership team, the PBIS team, and as a trauma-informed coach through Star Common Wealth. But beyond her titles, she is known for being a positive and supportive teammate to her colleagues throughout the building. Earlier this year, when another intervention specialist had to take medical leave, Mrs. Luthan was approached about temporarily stepping away from her own position to fill in, and without hesitation, she responded, "Yes, I am happy to help our students in any way possible." She quickly immersed herself in learning about the new classroom, took part in additional training, and dedicated countless hours to preparing subplans for her own class, all while embracing this new role with compassion and professionalism. Quote from her coworker, "Even though she had taken on extra responsibility in the school, she then volunteered at the conclusion of the special assignment to host the staff holiday gathering. She and her family opened their home to create a space for fellowship and camaraderie among staff." So, congratulations to Minerva France Teacher Jennifer Luthan. Next, help me welcome Nadessa Schmitz. Our next recipient, Ms. Schmitz, has truly earned the admiration and respect of some very important people at Huber Ridge, our 3rd graders. Meet Ms. Nadia, a beloved presence on the playground and a constant source of support and kindness during recess. Whether students need someone to talk to, a moment to calm down, or a little redirection on a tough day, they go straight to Ms. Nadia. She brings comfort with her calming squishy toys, structure to the ever-popular Gaga pit, and warmth to every interaction. Her ability to connect with students during unstructured moments is both unique and deeply impactful. A quote we received, "It takes a certain kind of person to be a teacher, but a different type of person to be with the kids during their recess and lunch periods." True, true. Ms. Nadia embodies patience, empathy, and connection, and we're so proud to honor her today. Congratulations again, Nadia. Alright, next, please welcome North High School Secretary Erica Smiley. So, she was nominated by a coworker, and she is truly the heart and soul of Westerville North High School. A proud graduate, a dedicated parent, and a valued staff member, Mrs. Smiley wears many hats, and she wears them all with care, commitment, and compassion. She consistently goes above and beyond to ensure that every staff member has what they need to succeed, whether it's providing a supply, offering a helpful resource, sharing a kind word, or just a fresh perspective. Mrs. Smiley brings her full self to everything she does. Mrs. Smiley also leads the planning and coordination of numerous events at North, including homecoming and the Alumni Hall of Fame Luncheon, creating meaningful experiences for both the students and the wider school community. Quote from the nomination, "She consistently shows all of the district's values on a daily basis, and I am so thankful I get to work with her every day. She's an amazing support for everyone in our building." Congratulations, Erica. Alright, last but not least, help me welcome Lindsay Powell. Lindsay, Lindsay joins us from McVeigh Elementary. It seems they were unable to join us today, but we will still recognize her. Very excited. Our final recipient of the evening is being recognized for something simple but yet powerful: treating everyone with respect and fairness. Ms. Lindsay Powell creates a classroom environment where students feel heard, valued, and empowered. One example stands out. When a student spoke out of turn, Ms. Powell gently reminded him to wait his turn. With mutual respect established, the student quickly settled and continued working, a small moment that speaks volumes about her approach. She fosters independence and encourages thoughtful collaboration. During a recent poetry assignment, students were given the freedom to choose their own partners, allowing them to take ownership of their learning in a supportive environment. A quote we received, "Ms. Powell is cool and kind. Her class is way more fun than others." Thank you, Ms. Powell, for developing the young minds of our students with kindness, structure, and care. Congratulations, McVeigh Elementary Teacher Lindsay Powell. Well, that concludes this portion. Thank you all so much.
Okay. Okay. Alright, thanks for your patience while everyone got settled and cleared out. Next up, we have 4.01 Superintendent Comments, Ms. Hamburg.
Thank you. So, obviously, want to start out with a huge congratulations to everybody that just left, to our A+ award winners and all the student athletes that we honored tonight. Also had the opportunity to be a part of the recent Alumni Hall of Fame inductions at both Central and North High Schools, and we'll be celebrating South High School Alumni Hall of Fame inductees on Thursday. So, that's always a great event. And just wanted to give a quick shout-out to our superintendents advisory students who select all those students, I'm sorry, all the inductees, and coordinate the event and put it on. They do all the speaking, and they just really do a nice job. So, always, I say always, my second time doing it now. A lot of fun to go around to those and just see the great work our kids do in honoring our alumni. I also would like to thank Representatives Abdallahie and Lear for visiting our schools last week. We appreciate them making time in their busy schedules to tour some of our buildings and learn more about public education. We're also looking forward to a visit from Representative Lorenz, who will be coming on Friday this week. And then, we have a visit scheduled with Senator Brenner in May. So, looking forward to that, and again, just any opportunity, we get to highlight the great work that our educators are doing, many of whom were recognized here tonight, and just continue to educate our legislators on how important public education is to our society. Speaking of public education, quick update on state funding, and Nicole, feel free to chime in here. But at our last meeting that we had at this location on April 7th, we did meet last week for the Gem Awards at Westerville North, but our last meeting here on April 7th, we shared the House's proposed budget amendment, which at that time was just a proposal, and they hadn't come out with the final piece that they voted through. And so, that included a clawback for any district that had a cash balance of over twenty-five percent of the, of the previous year's balance budget. The amended bill was changed to thirty percent, which, you know, we just want to continue to educate our community on, would still be very devastating for most public school districts in Ohio, would put most public school districts into fiscal wash or fiscal emergency within a year or two, including ours. So, we're very, very concerned about this. We continue. Nicole and I have testified. Kristi has testified. Many of our board members have paid visits and also contacted representatives and senators. And so, we would continue to urge our community to help in those efforts. You know, just want to continue to point out that we have six hundred and nine public school districts in Ohio that serve ninety percent of our children, and we just want to make sure that the funding continues to be there to make sure that children get the right to the education that they deserve. And Nicole, open up to anything you want to add there?
Yeah, I do just want to mention, it is extremely important that our community is reaching out to the state legislators. You know, like Angie mentioned, there are six hundred and nine traditional public schools that educate ninety percent of the students. But we're all very different. The six hundred and nine districts, we are all very different. A lot of the things that state lawmakers are trying to put into law are, they impact us in different, they impact us all in different ways. I keep hearing about the twenty mil floor. Westerville Schools is not on the twenty mil floor. I keep hearing about schools that have school district income taxes. Westerville Schools does not have a school district income tax. But these are things that lawmakers are talking about, and they're treating us like we're all the same, and we are not. And so, it's really important, you know, individual stories about why public education is important to individuals is really impactful to the legislators. And so, I cannot encourage people enough. This thirty percent, anything over thirty percent expenditure clawback would be detrimental to our community. It would mean we would be on the ballot nearly every year going forward. It would mean that our next ballot issue would have to be at least two mils higher than it was last November. It would put us in a very, very difficult situation to be able to provide the services and programs to our students that we do today. And this is the House's version of the budget. The Senate is, you know, they're, they've been on break, what, last week and this week? They'll be coming back into session next week. The Senate Education Chair is Andy Brenner, who's up in the Delaware County area. He's this, our state senate, one of our state senators that represents our area. And he has shared with us that the Education Committee is going to start having hearings on the 28th. And so, they need to be hearing from our community now about how this will impact our local schools. So, and what we have been sharing with them is that we are not like the other six hundred and nine schools. Like, we all have different things and different needs. And trying to explain to them how the funding has affected us, you know, we lost four million dollars in funding this year from the state already compared to last year. We gained over a hundred students in the formula. The formula, as they continue to only update one side of it, hurts our community. They're, they're continuing to not account for inflationary increases with the cost of doing business and education. And I just, I really think that they need to hear from that. And we're also sharing with them, we heard from the Auditor's State's Office tonight, you know, very happy to have our district earn that award again. But the Auditor's Office is putting out something at the same time that this is going on about financial health indicators that very specifically says that we would be in a cautionary situation if our fund balance fell below fifty percent. So, it just, things don't reconcile in my brain when I hear these things, but it is really important that we're reaching out and having conversations and that they are hearing from us in large numbers. So, thank you.
Could I just ask, so just to, because we, I feel like we're talking about it so much that we know what clawback means, we know what we mean when we say thirty percent. So, really what we're saying is that, you know, we have this cash reserve, and if we, anything over that thirty percent of our past year expenditures, we have to give back. So, we could lose next year-
A hundred and ten million.
A hundred and ten million dollars of our budget that we would be using to provide programming, pay personnel. I mean, this is a really dire situation right now. And so, when, when you reach out, we just ask that you ask them to strip that completely from the bill. Just completely take it out.
I do like to remind the legislators that we have a locally-elected Board of Education. You know, we hear a lot about local control and local conversations, and I think our elected board understands more what our community needs than people at the state that don't really pay that much attention to us. But it is being, you know, portrayed as property tax relief. But it would mean nearly every school district would need to be on the ballot-
Every year.
-by November. I mean, it's, it's very significant. So, but yeah, thank you for that explanation, because it is, it's very, school funding in Ohio is extremely complicated, and there are so many things wrong with it, but this would absolutely be detrimental to our community and all six hundred and nine traditional schools, public schools.
So, if nothing else, just share your story about why public education is so important to you and to please remove this cap on our cash balance rollover.
I think I kind of noted earlier, but it's important to note, and we shared this with the legislators we've talked to, that because we are already deficit spending, so we are already bringing in, because of the cuts they've made, we are bringing in less revenue year over year than we are spending. We were using our cash or are using our cash as a stopgap there. So, if they take that away, we would have to either, and, and you can't even pass that much in a levy, because again, you hit a certain threshold and you wouldn't be able to collect it. So, we would be looking at lots of potential cuts if they take away our cash, unless we figure out another way. But based on what we know right now, we think that it would be really hard to bridge that gap when you're looking at losing anything over thirty percent of your previous year's expenditures.
We also have hundreds of millions- We also have hundreds of millions of dollars in facilities needs. We have technology needs, we have lots of needs in this district that, you know, that cash could help with if we had stable funding from the state. But, you know, it's not like we don't need the cash should we have stable operating revenue. And that's what they're trying to portray it as and that's just not true at all. And it's certainly not property tax relief that they're, they, they have, this is my soapbox, just so you know. But they, the state has continued over the last several decades to add new policy laws that has shifted the burden of paying for traditional public schools to homeowners, away from businesses, away from the state, to a homeowner. And they have continued to increase that local burden. And they had an entire committee that reviewed property tax reform over a period of a year. They heard from all kinds of experts, had lots of hearings on it. They created a document full of recommendations. This was nowhere in that. They know that they have a significant issue that they need to fix and that they need to work on and it's not something that you can just put a Band-Aid on or take a chainsaw to and fix it overnight. And so instead of doing, you know, the work and get, that's what we would like to see them do, is do the work, fix our funding system, fully funding a school funding formula, especially one that's been researched. And I think everybody agrees if it were updated appropriately and fully funded, would meet the constitutional requirements of the state of Ohio. And that would go a long way towards property tax relief. So the hope is that we have some legislators that kind of realize how all that works.
And Nicole, this is going to affect other districts around us in similar ways, not identically, but in similar ways as well?
Yeah, yeah, it will, it will affect all of us. That's all I had tonight.
All right, thank you. Maybe we should have put the wordies at the back of the meeting. Well, next up, we have public comments. The Board of Education welcomes public comment on educational issues of interest to our school community. The Board does not discriminate based on the identity or viewpoint of the speaker during our public participation. However, the Board President may limit comments that are obscene, abusive, or harassing in any attempt to protect the privacy interests of our students. The Board asks that speakers not identify students by name during their comments. Persons having public complaints about district personnel, programming, or operations will be referred to the process set forth in Board Policy ninety-one thirty. And finally, the Board reminds speakers their statements should be directed to the Board as a whole and not to individual Board members. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the Board. A timer will be shown on the screens and Ms. Doran will call time when three minutes has elapsed. And so our first speaker we're welcoming tonight and our only speaker right now is Ms. Tara Stockdale. Welcome. Go to the microphone, yeah, thank you.
Hello, and thank you, respected members of the Board and Superintendent Hamburg. I first wanted to thank you for your commitment to students and public service in Westerville. I too am an advocate for public education, so it is very hard for me to be here and this is an emotional testimony as well. I am here today as a parent. I have an older son who went through Westerville Schools and two current middle schools. I'm here today to ask you to examine the working relationship with Education First Tours, doing business as EF Tours and Westerville City School District, for any conflict of interest violations for education per the Ohio Ethics Commission and selling travel services using district resources. I ask you to revert, review the current practices for any potential data privacy violations and federal, state, and local laws and policies, including those policies of this Board. I ask that you please consider any long-term ramifications if either of those are found to be in violation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And next up, we have six point zero one. And may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting held on Monday, April seventh, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second. Any changes or, okay. Ms. Marshall, will you take the vote, please?
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special session Board of Education meeting held on Monday, April fourteenth of twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second. Any comments or changes needed? Okay. Ms. Marshall, will you take the vote?
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And moving along to financial, seven point zero one, may I have a motion to approve the financial reports and investments for March twenty twenty-five?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Marshall, will you talk to us about this?
Yes, thank you. So this month, we are going over March, month end, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. For the general fund, we have year-to-date receipts of two hundred and twenty-four point two million. I will mention that's tax settlement month, which is why those are so high. And then year-to-date expenditures of a hundred and sixty-eight point three million and an unencumbered general fund balance of two hundred and nine point two million. Again, that's high because of the timing of those revenues from property taxes coming in. And year-to-date receipts, all funds, two hundred and eighty-four point three million. Year-to-date expenditures, all funds, two hundred and sixty-five point four million. And we ended with unencumbered fund balance for all funds at two hundred and forty-seven million for the month of March. That's all I have for that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right. Will you take the vote, please?
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And may I have a motion to approve the purchases in accordance with Ohio Revised Code fifty-seven zero five point four one D one in Board Policy sixty-three twenty?
So moved.
Second. And Ms. Marshall, will you talk to us about these?
Yes, thank you again. So we have, these are what we call the in and out purchase orders. This is where we have a purchase order that is open after the date of an invoice where goods or services were ordered. Anything three thousand or higher needs Board approval in order for us to make the purchase. We have three on this agenda. We have one for Westerville North Girls Lacrosse Team for uniforms with BSN Sports. There was a misunderstanding about the contract with rewards and so the wrong thing basically got paid out of the, what they thought was being paid out of the rewards, it was switched, if that makes any sense. So we do have the budget to cover that purchase. And then Central High School students, class of twenty twenty-six, had one for prom decorations where they missed opening the purchase order and that is included in the group's budget as well. And then the Operations Department had one for PIMCO Thermal, for thermographic roof surveys for all three of the high schools. And that was also included in the budget, it's just, it was just the timing of getting that opened. And I do recommend the Board's approval so that we can get these paid on the check run this week.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Will you take the vote?
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And may I take the personal consent as one? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the personal consent agenda eight point zero one through eight point zero nine?
So moved.
Second.
Welcome, Mr. Cooper.
Good evening, President Meyer, Vice President Leeban, members of the Board, Ms. Marshall and Ms. Hamburg. Tonight's Personnel Consent Agenda includes action items with regard to resignations, retirements, contract status changes, one-time pays, and other employment-related decisions. I would like to recognize the following staff members who have announced retirement on this evening's agenda. Jody Russell, with twenty-seven years in Westerville City Schools. Sarah Burka, twenty-four years in Westerville. Juliette Peoples, eleven years in WCS. We appreciate all these individuals have done for our students, staff, and community and certainly wish them the best in their years ahead. At this time, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments? Just congratulations to the retirees and thank you. Will you take the vote?
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. Next up, we have old business and I am going to ask that we move nine point zero one to the next meeting so we can take a look at the final reading of Policy fifty-seven fifty-one, parental status of students. So may I have a motion, can we take the rest of it as one? Okay. May I have a motion to approve old business nine point zero two through nine point zero seven?
So moved. Second.
Any comments, questions? All right, will you take the vote?
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And next we have new business, ten point zero one, first reading of Policy twenty-four thirty point zero two, participation of community STEM school students in extracurricular activities. And I know that you're going to be up here for a while, so I'm going to ask you to also talk to us about ten point zero two, the first reading for Policy twenty-four thirty-one, interscholastic athletics. And then also ten point zero three, the first reading for fifty, for sixty, graduation requirements. Welcome, Ms. Baldwin.
Thank you. Is this on? Is this okay? Yeah, okay. So the first policy recommended is twenty-four thirty point zero two. And this policy update aligns our policy with House Bill one forty-seven and current Ohio High School Athletic Association bylaws, which allows the superintendent or designee to allow students from home education, non-public schools, community schools, or other districts to participate in the district's interscholastic athletics if they were previously subjected to bullying, harassment, intimidation, certain criminal offenses, or misconduct by school personnel or students at their former school or district. And there's been an agreement in place for students and this adds the adult piece to it. So in addition to the superintendent approval, students would have to meet all of the requirements our students would have to meet as well. And students would not be penalized if instituting this particular policy. So I'm happy to answer any questions about that one you may have.
I think you're good to move on.
So our second one, twenty-four thirty-one interscholastic athletics, this is updating our policy language, include recommendations from House Bill forty-seven, has to do with the AEDs. And this policy will ensure that our students and families are receiving information about sudden cardiac arrest, training, and restrictions during their preseason meetings that we hold for each athletic season. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about that.
I am just wondering, is that something that we have included so far or maybe hit or miss, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there, but not consistently?
So we're working on updating all of those presentations, so it includes that information. We have been running AED cardiac drills and implementing that policy in our district currently.
All right, thank you.
And we do have our AEDs available at each of our sites.
That's great, thanks.
And then our third policy recommendation tonight is graduation requirements. And this policy update is simply grammatical changes. And so instead of separating out our local seals versus state seals, it just lists all of the seals in one and puts some minor updates on those seal language or sealed names. The language did not change or graduation requirements have not changed at this point. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have ten point zero four, the first reading of Policy sixty-five fifty, travel payment and reimbursements relocation costs. Ms. Marshall, will you please talk to us about this?
Yes, thank you again, President Meyer, members of the Board. So this is an update, so that what you just voted on in the final readings had a lot to do with the uniform guidance. This is also updated with recommendations from Neola based on some of those changes with the uniform guidance. And so it follows what's, it just kind of spells about more than the policy did previously.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you. So moving along to eleven, recommended actions standing business, we have eleven point zero one. And this is always a really good one, too, donations. Ms. Marshall, will you, may I have a motion to approve the donations as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Great, thank you. Now, Ms. Marshall, will you talk to us about these wonderful donations and the generosity of our community?
Yes, we are very grateful for our wonderful community. We have a large one, this large request this month, so a hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-two cents, which I believe that brings our year-to-date total up to three hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-four cents. Just really remarkable that our community continues to step up and help support our students in the classrooms throughout the district.
I think it's really cool that it's, we can see here, too, the prior year total received was just shy of three thousand dollars of what we are already at. So just thank you to our, our community. And go ahead and take the vote, yeah?
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And may I have a motion to approve the out-of-state overnight field trips?
So moved. Second.
And welcome back, Ms. Baldwin.
Good evening. I have three trips for your consideration this evening, two of which will be out of the country, one to Portugal and the other to Iceland. And those would happen in twenty twenty-seven to give students and families time to prepare for that trip. And then the third trip for consideration today is for the Westerville Central Band to travel to Florida and perform at Walt Disney World. And that would happen in February of twenty-six. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Okay. All right, thank you. Will you take the vote?
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And may I have a motion to approve resolution authorizing a contract with weatherproofing technologies for the facade restoration project at the Genoa Middle School?
So moved.
Second. Welcome, Mr. Swartz.
Good evening. So this will be a contract with Weatherproofing Technologies Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. The scope, which some people might be surprised to learn at Genoa, is we're doing masonry repairs and replacement. Even though the building's a little over twenty years old, this is actually the time buildings need to start to receive some of this updates and love and care. So it's masonry repairs and replacement, it's damaged deteriorated areas, kind of minor in scope, cleaning of all exterior masonry systems, power washing, using a wire brush, kind of rudimentary cleaning, fill and caulk exterior window and door joints, and probably most importantly, sealing of exterior masonry systems with a ten-year warranted product. It's important to note, we did this last year at Central High School, just to share, and will probably continue as funding is available to recommend it years forward. Heritage and other, other schools be completed by August second, twenty twenty-five, and it's being funded out of permanent improvement or PI money or OO three funds, as other folks know it. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Just to ask, Mr. Swartz, is this something that, you know, you've been expecting for some amount of time or we have our sort of regular cycle of masonry work? So if you could just talk about that a little bit so people understand how we, how we approach this work and kind of know what's coming?
Sure. So similar to your home, there are somewhat predictive things that have to occur. Your roofs only last twenty years. Masonry is very similar in that if you don't seal it and take care of it over time, it will start to flake. If you go to the schools right now, you can see where salt for ice and snow has kind of deteriorated, some of the bases around the entrances at Genoa, you'll see some of the bricks spalling and things like that. So while it's not critical, if we don't do it now, it can be long-term damage. We can get wicking of water into the building, things like that. So it's basically preventive medicine to really eliminate future larger costs that could occur.
Yeah, thanks for explaining.
Thank you. Can you take the vote?
Mr. Hackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeban?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And may I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing agreement with Brian's and Jones' Construction for the Genoa Middle School Track Replacement Project?
So moved. Second.
So this is one of two track replacement contracts. I'm going to point out a couple differences between Genoa and Walnut Springs. I'm gonna point out a couple differences between Genoa and Walnut Springs, the next item. So it's with Burns and Jones Construction for this one's in the amount of five hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars. The scope involves full replacement of the wear course or the top coat that you run on. This is an eight-lane track, that's important to note, Walnut in a second you'll hear is only six lanes. We're also reapplying all the competition lane markings once we've resurfaced it. And then a full replacement of the long jump approach at this school that had deteriorated to the point. It's time to replace it, again, that's the difference in Walnut Springs and this one as well and the dollar value that we'll learn in a second. The project, I will note, is gonna actually start, we've coordinated with the schools, the athletic departments, on May nineteenth. If all goes forward tonight, and that'll give us more than ample time to finish. I wouldn't note for the public, there's a little bit of downtime, they rip it off, they put the new surface down. It actually cures for twenty-eight days. So there'll be a dead time, if you will, a non-working time. If folks are watching the project, before they come back, probably in late June, early July to finish. But the, the completion date on the contract, we'll see August second, just to share. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Just to point out the timing on that because the track goes around the football fields. And so we want to make sure that's in done in time for football games, correct?
Yes, exactly.
Other ball sports that may be out there?
And what are the age of the tracks at both schools?
They were both resurfaced within the last ten years. And again, sort of back to, we talked about masonry, some of the predictive maintenance that comes up with them. And so it's, it's basically time to do both of them.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall, will you take the vote?
Mrs. Lee Ban?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Heckelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes, I know that you talked about Walnut, but we gotta approve it too. So may I have a motion to approve the agreement with Burns and Jones Construction for the Walnut Springs Middle School Track Replacement Project?
So moved? Second.
Will you take the vote?
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Heckelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee Ban?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the resolution for the contract with Total Tennis Inc. for the tennis court repairs at North High School?
So moved?
Second.
And welcome again, Mr. Schwartz.
So this is a contract proposed for Total Tennis Incorporated in the amount of one hundred two thousand nine hundred and seventy. This is restoration repairs, not full, take it down to base and start over. Just to share for the board, that would be in excess of a half million. So this is a proactive approach to maintaining it in a competition level in the near future. Work includes seal and repair all cracks and damaged areas. Replace all five courts, which is required for competition high school level. And a century refresher, repaint the surface, all the markings, so it'll look new. It'll buy us only about three to five years, just to share. That would, would have a completion date also of August second tied to when they feel they need to use it again. And with that, happy to answer your question. It is funded from permanent improvement money, just to remind you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point out, I know Doug deals with this a lot, but when we're dealing with these asphalt surfaces, really it, they get to a point where it's a safety issue. So we try to schedule and get them done before kids are at risk.
And it sounds like it'll buy us a little bit more time too.
It will, right now it's almost beyond usable to meet standards for play.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right, you take the vote?
Mr. Heckelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee Ban?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes, and may I have a motion to approve the agreement with VSWC Architects Inc. for Design Services for the Westerville South High School Baseball and Softball Scoreboard Replacement Project?
So moved? Second.
Mr. Schwartz, will you talk to us about this?
Sure, so it's a professional services agreement where those others were all construction contracts. The amount of nineteen thousand, we've used this architect in the past. For instance, at North High School softball scoreboards, they were hired. We have to have a permit, there are structural drawings, electrical drawings involved, so we have to have a licensed professional. This would allow us to replace both those boards, which are well beyond their useful life unfortunately. But in time for any sports, it would start this fall. So they both have an August second completion date. But this is a necessary preamble before we can purchase them and then get someone on board to actually install them. But that is still planned and fully vetted for the summer. And this is also OO-three or permanent improvement dollars as well.
How long does something like that take?
In terms of replacing it or the design?
The replacement.
Oh, the replace-
Well, I guess the whole process then.
So the design usually takes about a month. Permitting can take a couple weeks. The installation, believe it or not, can happen in less than two weeks. It's really a matter of if they're coordinated, their powers are there. It's really a matter, do they have the steel? Can they pull the board quickly and get the steel in place? That's the, the main lead, if they don't have weather issues, they should be fine.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? All right, we take the vote?
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee Ban?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Heckelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes, and eleven point zero eight, may I have a motion to approve the resolution awarding contract to Lehman Damon Construction Services for the Robert Frost Elementary, Mark Twain Elementary Gym Enclosure and SLC ADA Restroom Project?
So moved?
And talk to us about this, Mr. Schwartz.
Sure, so those are familiar, Robert Frost and Mark Twain are essentially identical buildings. So the scope is identical, so essentially you could divide the dollar in half. It's important, these are two very distinct pieces of scope. One is enclosing the gyms. Since the day they opened, they've been an open-sided, three-sided gym, if you will, with the four-sided being some display cases and an impact-resistant padding on the gym side. I jokingly said the first time I visited there, I had to duck a ball from kids playing dodgeball, so all good, it was fun. But this will create a wall and doors to separate both the noise. Some of the other activities are more important. This project was driven by the community and some concerns with it being, both facilities being used as voting facilities and our required partnership with the Board of Elections. So this will create a physical barrier, well, a sound barrier and other things. So it'll benefit the school and some of the concerns with safety relative to the voting. The bathroom is totally unrelated to that, that is converting an existing boys' or men's group restroom that serves the building slash the gym. It'll convert it to a single-use handicap restroom. That is really driven, we're doing that at a couple schools, for instance Walnut this summer. We've got a construction project you previously approved. It becomes a restroom that can be used by the SLC students. Many of our students now have AIDS and have challenges. They might need assistance in personal grooming or going to the restroom, and that's what this affords them, that privacy, that dignity. Also, it allows us to have a changing table for them as well. But the restroom is still fully accessible and usable by everyone else in the school as well. So very distinct, separate, but they happen to be adjacent, so we took that opportunity to do both at the same time.
I just wanted to add, we sent a communication out today on the polling locations. I know we've had some concerned community members about that and, and Mr. Schwartz alluded to it. But we are required to use our buildings, so we have asked to try to not use them, especially Mark Twain and Robert Frost because of the lack of walls in the gym. We are required, so we do have in a WE Day, a Professional Development Day in the fall when we have elections so that we don't have students in the building. The primary is a little harder because it moves around, so you can't really schedule it as much in advance. So we wanted to make sure that our parents know, hopefully by the next time we have to use it, these walls will be in place. In the meantime, we can't have a police officer in the polling location, but we plan to have an SRO out in the hallway to help monitor and make sure that people are not able to access the building. So not ideal, but want to make sure we have all those bases covered. And again, we're excited to be able to hopefully move forward with this, this work for future elections.
Thanks for that additional information. Any other questions or comments? Will you take the vote?
Mr. Heckelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee Ban?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes, and may I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing a contract with Garland DBS Inc. for FY twenty-five Westerville City Schools Roof and Masonry Repair Project?
So moved? Second.
Mr. Schwartz, will you talk to us about this?
Thank you, so this is a contract the board has approved many years in a row with Garland DBI Incorporated for roofing repairs identified at Central and South High School. It's something we haven't, haven't always had to address, some masonry concerns above the parapet. So I'll call it roofing masonry, basically out of, out of visual sight from the average person at Whittier and North High School as well. The contract is an amount of one million four hundred and fifty thousand three hundred and one dollars. This project also has a completion date of August second, twenty twenty-five, and is also funded from the OO-three permanent improvement or PI funds. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Sounds like a lot of work will be happening this summer.
It's our busy time.
I know, I'm very thankful that we'll get it done when kids are out of school and teachers are out.
Just to confirm, you said Whittier, North, also Central and South, right, for some of this work?
Yep, for roofing and/or masonry, yes.
Thanks.
Mrs. Lee Ban?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Heckelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Next up, we have board comments, who would like to go first?
Actually, can I pop in real quick?
Yes.
I want to say congratulations to all of our award winners and, man, we have some amazing, amazing athletes in this district. So thank you for, it takes a ton of work, thank you for all your hard work. Thank you to our A-plus winners. And then I am going to take my allergies out of the room while the rest of the board has comments, so be right.
Anybody else?
Just echo my colleague, congratulations to the athletes and the award winners.
Yeah, I also want to congratulate all of the award recipients today. Congratulations to all of the incredible retirees, thank you so much for your many years of service. But also, just to echo what our colleagues were sharing, it's so, so important for us to all come together right now during these hard times. And really encourage our lawmakers to fund our schools fairly. I mean, we are, we, we are all doing the best that we can, but I've seen firsthand how much of a difference it makes when we're reaching out to our lawmakers. And it can be very intimidating and overwhelming, but leave voice messages maybe after hours. Send an email, I mean, there are so many different ways that we can make our voices heard. And so there was a slight increase to the budget, but not, not nearly as much. And that's certainly not enough, and so please, please, please continue to support us. We don't have that, we don't have a lot of time until final decisions are made. And so we're really doing everything that we can to get the word out. And so I just wanted to leave that message with you all.
Ditto on the congratulations to everyone, and I want to say thank you to the A-plus award winners for, I don't know if any of them are still here, but amazing, amazing work. If you are getting recognized for doing something incredibly well from a colleague or a parent, you truly are doing something incredibly well. We all know that you don't usually get like positive feedback, it's always negative feedback. So that's really exciting for them, so thank you so much. I just want to say, I think we are all navigating what are some truly uncertain times right now for our finances, obviously, in terms of the district and the other districts around the state. When we're looking at requirements of what we're going to be required to do and not do. But also for our students, our parents, our teachers. These are very uncertain times right now, a lot of things are in flux, a lot of things are up in the air and a lot of chaos is happening. And I want to reiterate that, I won't speak for the whole board, but I believe we would all sign on to this. We are here to try to make this as easy as possible for our students. We don't want our students to be noticing changes. So as much as we can possibly keep things level for them, make sure that they are provided with the tools they need to be successful and thus the staff and educators being provided with, they need to help students be successful. That is our bottom-line goal, and I'm really trying to keep that in mind as we are navigating the very chaotic world around us right now. Try to stay focused on the kids and what they need and do the best that we can with that.
Well, ditto my colleagues and just the congratulations and thank you to all the awardees and to my colleague Louise Justin and Anisa. But I really, I want to take a moment and congratulate our treasures department. Thirteen years in a row, and I wish I could remember the gentleman's name, so please forgive me. But I think it was really important that he, you know, we, we hear sometimes that we mismanage the funds and that gentleman right there said that we haven't, right? Thirteen years in a row, we have not, we've won, what was it, we were one of four percent, four percent. I think that's amazing and I just really want to say thank you and thank you to the whole department, thank you so much. I would just say, so I think this was said, and then I'll move off the, the budget stuff because you guys are probably like, oh my gosh, do they ever stop talking about the budget? But, no, we, we don't. So I think Nicole said, they'll start hearing in the Senate Education Committee, April twenty-eighth. They'll hear for the next two weeks, they'll take a break, and then they'll come back and hear in the Finance Committee. So there is time, but not a lot of time. It will move quickly and things will change. So we'll do our best to keep you guys updated, but just very simple, if you call, just state who you are, why public education is important to you, and please remove that cap from our cash roll over. So I just wanted to call out a few things. This weekend, our Westerville City School District students will be displaying their art at the Westerville Art Hop on April twenty-sixth in Uptown. So that's a great opportunity to go check out some art and see what our amazing students are doing. And also, don't forget to check out the three high school summer camps that are going on. There's a lot of things that are happening the rest of the school year, a lot of award ceremonies and a lot of opportunity to see some final plays. So take the opportunity and let's celebrate where we can in these hard times. So that's it for me. And then we are going to move into, okay. So the board will meet in regular work session on Monday, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five at six P.M. And on Monday, May fifth, twenty twenty-five at six P.M. At the Early Learning Center, nine three six East Wind Drive, Westerville, Ohio. Four three zero eight one for those listening online, but that's here. And then may I have a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of preparing for, conducting or reviewing negotiations with employees regarding their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment and for the purposes of discussing the employment and compensation of public employees?
So moved? Second.
Ms. Marshall, will you take the vote?
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee Ban?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. You're more than welcome to stay, but I don't know how long we'll be. Or you can leave, thank you.
Seven twenty-eight.
We are back and it is?
Eight fifty-nine.
Eight fifty-nine, yep. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved, so moved.
Second.
Second.
Would you take the roll?
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Heckelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee Ban?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.